Okay, I'll try this one. International Summer Festival Planning Committee, the request was for 2,000 and the recommendation from the committee was to fund the proposal at 2,000. You will find the narrative for the International Summer Festival Planning Committee's request attached to the May 30th meeting. There are individuals here who can speak to specifics here. This particular proposal was first made to us, I believe, I did not check this this evening, but last June, I believe.
Could we at least know who is prepared to speak on this? Under the council rules, we generally don't allow for public.
I believe that if there are questions, they are to be directed to Mr. Lambros. Is that not correct? George Lambros.
Is there any discussion on this matter? Mrs. Schaefer.
I have only two questions. And one is more of a worry than a question. Would this in any way subtract from the Fest- International Coral Festival? I think that is such a wonderful event. And then, in this fourth paragraph of this statement, it says, "The International Coral Festival shall serve as the primary festival activity in those years which is scheduled." Does that mean that you would still continue to have a summer fest that year also?
That's correct.
You would have both, that one year?
Yes, ma'am.
George, for the record, we need you to identify yourself on tape, but give your address if you don't mind.
I'm George Lambros, 501 Crestline Drive. And basically, there are thirty of us that have volunteered to work towards developing the international festival. And it's intended to be, because the international festival was so successful, we have, in our determination, developed a theme that the entire festival each year should have an international theme. And of course, when the international music festival is here, we will be completely supportive of that particular event. But our long-term effort is to try to have a summer festival each year. The international festival is such a large concentration of effort that it's felt that that cannot be done every year. If we could, we would like to use that as our major theme every year. But it's impossible to ask the community of people who are involved to work that diligently each year. So in the meantime, one of the things that happened when I was president of Missoula Economic Development Corporation, we divided the community into various groups of discussion on what we felt would be best for the community for the long run. And there were thirteen specific focus items that was developed through the community forum of ideas. And one of them was the music festival for a summer festival to be developed into the Missoula community. And we, as a group of thirty, met, and the group that's identified in the interim is a group of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people who are working on behalf of the group of thirty, and we will be reporting back to them on the basis of our recommendation. And the theme is going to be international and focused, and there will be a headline event, and there will be a proposed regional and local and additional program possibilities that we're going to recommend in a meeting which will occur. We were trying to have an event of this nature this year, but it's such a magnitude of planning that to perform this year, we were unable to do so. And so, we're doing it in the form of a planning study with the intent of having a full performance in the 1992 session. And the University of Montana this week has agreed to match the city's contribution towards this effort. So we have gotten the city's contribution. We would hope that we would get the city's support. And from that, we will, as business people, also contribute the additional $2,000 that would be from the private sector. Or the public sector.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Lambros? Mr. Lucino.
Well, of course, these requests are coming to us through the Economic Development Committee. And so, I would assume that it is assumed that any money that we agree to provide as seed money for these ventures and efforts would come back many-fold to the community. And so, George, I guess I would like to ask you, is there any doubt in your mind at all that this $2,000, for instance, would not come back many-fold to retailers and to motel and hotel owners and proprietors here in Missoula?
Our primary focus is to add the additional tourism and to get additional investments that would come to Missoula from the purpose of tourism. However, we feel there's a broader scope in here that the community will benefit at the same time as the enjoyment of our cultural values and the university participation. And it seems like the committees that are involved certainly believe that Missoula has the capacity to develop this kind of program that will be an economic development as well as a community benefit.
Thank you. Further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, George. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Moving right along, the committee recommends that the council fund the request of the National Forest Service Museum in the amount of $10,000, and I would so move.
Mrs. Schaefer.
I would move to amend this motion to read $13,000 for the National Forest Museum.
The discussion is on the amendment. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Can we have a division on that? I found that to be an extremely unsatisfying vote.
I'm sorry.
I mean, it's not your fault, Dan.
I was the one that voted no by the way it was raised.
I believe I slept through it. I'd like to vote.
All right, then we'll call the roll.
We'll presume then I voted on the prevailing side, and I'm calling for a recount.
McLaughlin?
No.
Ah, there's another one, see.
Did you say no?
I didn't vote at all.
He said no.
Potts?
No.
Reidy?
No.
Rice?
No.
Sampson?
No.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Shea?
No.
Wood?
No.
Craig?
No.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hermis?
Yes.
Lucino?
Yes.
Fails, four to eight.
Now, there's something you don't see every day.
Well, I'll never complain again. I just could have sworn that this.
I'm not satisfied with what's been said.
Like it did the first time.
The motion fails.
Don't be so technical next time.
We'll go on to...
We'll go back to the original, the original motion.
Oh, that was the amendment, I'm sorry. All right.
Yes, that was the amended motion.
We're back to the original motion, then.
No.
Yes.
And would you please spell the original motion?
The original motion is for $10,000, just as you suggested this afternoon. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Now, unless I'm mistaken, Donna, was it your intent on the first amended motion when we downgraded M E D C's allotment from $8,000 to $5,000, that that $3,000 would be used for the museum?
Yes, that's what I meant.
And now, we just voted in such a way that the $3,000 will not be used for this particular use.
That's sweet.
So now, we're about to vote for the $10,000 for the museum request with $3,000 in limbo. Is that correct?
Well, yes, or you might say it's in the cash register.
Yes.
It's not in limbo.
It's an even better place.
In the city coffers, I understand.
Better than this.
And we're all aware of that.
Of course we are.
Further discussion, Mr. Larson.
We voted twice.
Yes, I find it...
Doug, can you pull your microphone up, please?
Yes, it concerns me a little bit that earlier this year, we spent somewhere over $500,000 for open space, and tonight, we've spent a whopping $7,000 on economic development. I don't know. Maybe we spent too much on one or the other of which.
Further discussion? Mr. Rice.
I think that Doug understands that this particular discussion that we are not going to have here at this moment has to do with where money comes from, how it gets budgeted, et cetera. The funds available to us, and I think the committee took this rather seriously, was $20,000. And that's what's been in the budget. That represented a 100% increase over the previous budgets over the last, I believe, five years, six years. And whether or not that is adequate, I think is, I don't even think it's arguable. I think it's probably not adequate. I wouldn't disagree with that. I think, though, that if that were the sum and total of the city's economic development contribution to this community, it would be inadequate. I would also point out that the M R A has a substantial budget which is largely directed towards, at least in theory, economic development. The city has a large sum of money in Title I funds, which it has taken some $250,000 of and used to leverage an additional $750,000 in loans in the city. So I think that we've done okay. I think that in terms of, you know, we literally spend millions of dollars every year on economic development, and I think we shouldn't underestimate that. It is easy, when we get down to talk about $7,000, $5,000, $2,000, to sort of wonder why we're doing what we're doing. But I think we should also affirm the fact that we have a lot of money, a lot of eggs out there in other baskets, which are legitimate economic development activities and ought to be characterized as such.
Further discussion? Are you ready for the vote on the original motion at $10,000? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Name.
I'm not going to ask.
Well, the motion carries. We'll go on to, is that all?
Oh, I'm afraid it's not. No. We just keep, the hits just keep on coming. Economic development is going to do the clean sweep of its agenda tonight. Also, with some minor discussion on the meeting of the 23rd, but in more detail in the meeting of this evening, we heard a presentation from the Regional Economic, Social, and Community Research Project representatives, specifically from the Bureau of Government Research at the University of Montana, which, working with the local government center at Montana State, has proposed a research project to, which will seek to identify the Missoula region from a multi-level perspective and to look at the region as an economic entity with Missoula as its center. The proposal, which we discussed on the 23rd and again today, is to fund an internship position for $1,500. And I would so move, and if I may briefly speak to that.
Mr. Rice.
There are, or there is, I guess, yes, Pat's still back there, somebody to speak if there are particular questions. I have a limited number of copies of the proposal, which I would be happy to distribute to anyone who wants to read them. I don't know how I happen to have these, but they're here. I'll leave it with Donna, and she can distribute them. The internship proposal is in excess of the already, of the internship budget for this year. We have already used all of our internship positions. We used one for the Solid Waste Task Force. We used one for the legislature, and we used one, or perhaps are still using one, to work with the Baseball Advocates Group. The proposal from the committee is to fund, I didn't write this down, and Chris didn't write it down either, fund this particular project out of the council's 350 account, contracted services. And the motion is for an allocation of $1,500 for this project. And if you have further questions, Mr. Edgar, I'm sure would love to answer them.
Mr. Sampson.
What exactly is the project, Al Fred?
I'm going to let Pat do this. My name is Pat Edgar, 2315 Foothills Drive, presently the Director of the Bureau of Government Research. The project is intended to measure and to understand a little bit better what the Missoula region is. And we're going to take a multi-dimensional approach, meaning that we're going to go out and gather data from the various sectors, the health sector, retail sector, real estate sector, finance sector, or whatever other sectors we can come up with to define, collate all of that data so that we get a map drawn first as to what the Missoula region is, how it's defined, how far it reaches out, how strong that influence is. And then, from there, define it in a sense that we say, well, this is what it's about. That's what's available, these are the resources, these are the needs, here are some potential barriers. After that, with that information at hand, we will draw in some members of those various sectors from both within the Missoula City itself and the surrounding region to develop a plan of action as to what needs to happen to facilitate or invigorate the Missoula region a little bit better.
Al, I might just give a little bit of background for where this proposal came from, because it, right now, I think seems to be out of the thin air or out of the political science department, neither of which would be entirely fair. You may remember that when Mr. Whitlock resigned as a director for the Montana League of Cities, that I was appointed as the regional director on the board of the Montana League of Cities. At about that same time, the local government center at Bozeman received a grant from the Northwest Area Foundation, the purpose of which was to do some baseline work with Montana cities and counties, trying to determine some important parameters of their economies. I, at that time, entered into a discussion with the other directors from the Montana League of Cities in our region. And those directors are all from the small towns around Missoula. And at that time, we discussed the possibility of going to the local government center and asking them not to do baseline data on one community, but to do it on an entire region. And the idea is, as I see it, that cities have an important economic role to play, that cities really are economies to a substantial extent. And that a city like Missoula as the heart of an economic region has a mutual role to play with the smaller towns in that region. That is, that our prosperity depends upon theirs and vice versa. But that is a fine theory, but trying to pin it down is really what this project is about. The local government center has offered to the University of Montana, the Political Science Department, a grant of $5,000 to allow Mr. Edgar to be the project director for this research project, to try to identify the Missoula City region, to try to figure out exactly how it is that Missoula operates as the heart of an economy, with the idea, then, of being able to identify some ways of strengthening that economy. And at the same time, it gives us an opportunity to work with the small towns in our region, and hopefully to bring them into a closer alliance with Missoula, so that sometimes, when we need to be in alliance in the legislature or otherwise, that we'll be in a stronger position to do that. So I hope that gives a little bit more background to what this is all about. This $1,500, then, would hire a research assistant, in effect, along with another $1,500 from the local government center.
Mrs. Shea.
I have a question for Fred, I guess, or whoever knows about this. First of all, I have a concern that this wasn't in our packets, and is there a rush that we have to decide this tonight? It may only be $1,500, but it's $1,500 that we didn't ordinarily plan to spend tonight.
Mr. Rice.
Again, the item was properly referred. I was under the impression that after the meeting of the 22nd, or 23rd, we'd actually approve the proposal. If people would prefer to read through this, I don't know, I guess we could ask Mr. Edgar if there would be a problem taking it up next week, if that's what people would prefer.
No problem.
Mr. Edgar indicates that there isn't a problem, and I have no problem taking it back. We just got the paperwork on it today, so.
Without objection, then we'll hold this for another week.
We will hold it.
Well, Mr. Edgar is here, if anybody has any more questions for him, they're welcome, perhaps. I guess not. Thank you, Pat. Okay, does that fix up?
I'm afraid not.
All right. Mr. Rice.
Another item we've been carrying around, like, I won't describe what it's like, has been the issue of the Lolo-Kuttenia Accords. As you may be aware, there is going to be a series of panel discussions that will take place in Missoula on the 10th. I believe it takes place at the Village Red Lion. I have distributed the, I believe this is today's fourth draft, and I did not include all the corrections. I do have, I think, the first draft also, if anybody wants to look at it. Sometime about a month and a half ago, you may have received a resolution that was drafted by the chief administrative officer. The committee went through what the county had done. The county wrote a series of letters and has had about four or five hours of discussion with proponents and opponents of the accords, the Senate bill that puts, that is the legislation that puts the results of the accords process into law. And this is what the committee agreed we would do last week after about five hours of discussion. I did, what this is, is obviously a letter, proposed letter, which would be sent to the senators, which is where the Senate Bill 72 currently lies. And I think it must be pretty good, because there are a lot of people who don't like it. We have spoken with the Alliance for the Wild Rockies. They have some serious problems with this. They are the major spokespeople who are speaking against the accords at the moment. We have spoken with people who are in support of the accords and the alliance, who have some misgivings about both bills, and they have said this is an acceptable letter. We've talked with the Montana Wilderness Association. We've talked with at least one individual who represents the Montana Wilderness Association. We've had most of these people at our meetings during the last month, and we have had several long discussions. What our hope is tonight is that the council will agree that this is a letter they can sign, and it will be drafted for your signatures and ready to be signed prior to next week. And I will take the responsibility of bringing it to your attention. I do not expect that the language here is acceptable to everyone. I'm not sure it's even acceptable to everybody on the committee. It was written essentially by a committee. So there are problems. During the last two sessions, where we actually discussed the substance of this letter, Gary Slingeby, who was not able to attend those meetings, was not present, obviously. And the first, he was notified this morning that we would be discussing this, and I believe that he has some comments that he would like to make to us at this time, and I'd like to ask that he be recognized.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Jerry Slingeby. I'm president of lumber production industrial workers, Local 3038, out in Bonner. I was one of the individuals who was involved in negotiating what is known as the Lolo Accords. About two months ago, we sent letters to the city council and the mayor seeking your endorsement of Senate Bill 72, which essentially is a bill combining what is known as the Kuttenia and the Lolo Accords. Although we appreciate all the effort put forth by the subcommittee, we feel that this letter of endorsement falls short of what was expected. Several of the arguments put forth by the letter seem to indicate that this bill is a forced-practice bill. It's not. It's a wilderness designation bill. And the response is actually, does more really to confuse the issue rather than to clarify it. What we would like to do is to spend, to, I guess, if I'm doing this right, is to suspend your regular rules. And I would like to distribute what was the original resolution. And we would like to have the city council take these into consideration and hopefully vote on this resolution and to endorse this resolution. Getting back to the letter, I think what was forgotten during the writing of the letter was that this is a very delicate balance between local conservationists and the timber industry people. The Lolo Accord is supported wholeheartedly by Champion International, which is my employer. And it is also endorsed by a lot of the mainstream conservationists within the Missoula community. If you take a look at the letter that's before you, and if you compare what is written there with some of the arguments that is being put out by the Alliance for the Wild Rockies, I think that you would have to agree that, almost verbatim, that is not an endorsement of Senate Bill 72, but rather, it's an endorsement of Alliance for the Wild Rockies' five-state bioregion, which by any stretch of the imagination would have drastic effects upon the workers and the timber industry. So what we would like to do at this time is, if I can receive permission to do so, is to hand out the original resolution, and hopefully, the council will take a look at it and react accordingly. Also with me tonight is Bob Decker. Bob Decker was also involved in a lot of the negotiation of the accords. Bob is a well-known representative of the conservation community. And Bob would like to come up and speak a little bit about the situation. I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Chemus, and members of the council. Bob Decker is my name. I work for the Montana Wildlands Coalition. I live in Helena. The Wildlands Coalition is a, as the name implies, is a group of conservation groups, forty-odd Montana-based conservation groups that work on the wilderness issue. I'm here this evening because the accord people thought it would be a good idea to have alongside Jerry, representing the labor side of the equation, to have a representative of the conservation side of the accord equation. Several, all of the conservation groups that signed both the Lolo and Kuttenia Accords are members of the Montana Wildlands Coalition, my employer. We don't disagree with the contents of the letter that Mr. Rice has proposed or put before you this evening. Conservation groups are very interested in not only the wilderness issue, but how forest practices occur on public and private lands, interested in wildlife corridors, interested in bioregional management of our forest resources. But I just want to leave you with, maybe I could start you with one thought when you consider these resolutions. When we started, when we, the conservation community, started our negotiations with the labor community early last year, we knew it was a new thing. We had been, frankly, enemies, or at least adversaries, for 13 years in the wilderness debate, and we thought, let's give it one shot. After nine failed wilderness bills, let's see if we can't sit down and talk. And the one thing we had to agree on was that we could... And the one thing we had to agree on was that we could probably only agree on one thing. It took us about a month to establish that we were only going to talk about wilderness. By doing that, we got past the stereotypes, got past the generalizations, got past the name-calling, and we could hold the agenda to wilderness. We weren't going to discuss wolves, we weren't going to change the Endangered Species Act, we weren't going to discuss Forest Service road budgets, we weren't going to resolve the clear-cut crisis, anything else, just wilderness. What I'd like you to think about this evening is, in making a statement for the accords, if you choose to do so, you're making a statement for resolution of the wilderness issue on two national forests. And that's what we need from you folks, if you want to support the accords, because that's all they deal with, it's a wilderness resolution issue. In that respect, that's why we agreed with the first resolution that was presented to the council some time ago and that Jerry just passed out. It's clean, it's clear, and it deals with the wilderness issue. Whereas the conservation community doesn't disagree with the first letter you have, it's not as strong, and when we go into that hearing Monday, it's going to be a contest, and we need some good, clean, clear help, good, effective support. So from the conservation side of things, I'd like you to consider that, that appeal, that we need your support, but we need it as clean and as simple as possible. We want to resolve these other issues, and perhaps if we resolve one big one, we can get to all the others. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Rice?
I defer to Bill, but I'd like to be recognized when he's done.
I'll move the resolution.
It is, the, the, the resolution is on, already on the agenda bill, you don't have to suspend the rules.
I'll, uh...
Well, yeah, you can't do it anyway with a motion on the floor. No, that's right, there is no motion on the floor, so he can go ahead and do it, all he has to do is introduce the resolution, it's not necessary.
You do not move the letter?
It isn't appropriate to move a letter, I never...
All right, then.
I'll move, I'll move the resolution.
Mr. Rice?
I think that we're now to the point of doing committee business on the floor, and I also would urge you that if you do decide that you want to move the resolution, that you set a public hearing for it, because I can assure you that there are many people who are not in this room now, who have very strong opinions about this, both for and against. And I would also point out that early on in the discussions in committee, the resolution was dropped as a viable mechanism for expressing the sentiment of the people who participated. At various points in the discussions, we had as many as ten people in the room, the majority of them were spokespeople for the accords process. But if the council intends to run this resolution through without checking off with the various people who've worked on this, I think that it constitutes a major betrayal of public processes and of what this body ought to be all about. I took this by hand to both proponents and opponents, starting at six o'clock this morning. I made sure that Mr. Slingeby was contacted, just as I made sure that people from the alliance were contacted. The only people who have had any, any, made any changes in the letter, the only people who've gotten back to me have been the people who originally started the process, with whom I sat down in person and went over the language I spoke to. Carl Anglin, who was the person, I believe, originally, one of the original people to bring the issue to the city, and I've also sat down with the members of the committee who worked on it. If the intention of the council is to run this resolution through right now, then I think that it constitutes a major betrayal. I also think that Mr. Decker somewhat misstates the situation. There is no hearing on the tenth. There is no hearing on the tenth. There is, I believe, three panels which were selected, they are, there, you cannot walk in and participate in a hearing. It is a, it is a performance, but it is not going to be an opportunity for people to speak for or against. I would also point out that the first paragraph clearly and plainly states that it is a wilderness bill. I would also ask that if the council does not like the letter format, and I'm not wedded to either this particular letter or the format, but that is what the committee agreed to do, that they consider what the Board of County Commissioners did. Now, the Lolo people told us, or the accords people told us, that the county hurt them by separating the Kuttenai from the Lolo. We agreed not to separate the forests despite considerable pressure to do so. We kept the Kuttenai in with the Lolo. We included the wilderness issue as the first part of the discussion, and we echoed, by and large, the county's positions in the letters that they sent to the Senate representatives. But, and, and I'm not, you know, I have never thought that, that we were going to be able to come out of this sucker unscathed, and I believe that there's plenty of room to disagree. But if we sit in this room tonight and allow two individuals to speak when there are literally hundreds of people in this town who, had they known there was going to be a hearing on this, would be here, I think that's a real miscarriage of what we're about.
Let me go to a procedural matter here. I'm really not sure on what basis the motion has been made without a suspension of the rules. The matter is in committee. My understanding of the rules are that it cannot simply be brought out of committee by making a motion to pass the resolution. That's exactly the situation under which a suspension of the rules is called. It's not on the, it's not on tonight's agenda.
It is.
It is.
It is, where?
Well, I, I mean, it's on the committee agenda, I think it's on, on the agenda.
Fred brought it to the floor.
And I would, I would rule that it is actively being considered by the committee, but I believe, and I've asked those who have worked on the committee whether or not this particular stratagem was accepted or rejected. It is my understanding, I would not have gone to and done what I, I've literally spent four or five hours today running around doing this, and I think that if that's not what people wanted me to do, I wish they'd told me yesterday.
Well, I guess my point is that in general, if something is on the agenda for the council to deal with, that it is on an agenda that's before us, it would have been a motion from the committee. Mr. Sampson?
What, according to our rules, what is the procedure for getting something out of committee? I've been asked about this two or three different times, how, how to get it out of Mr. Rice's committee, it's been sitting in there for some time, and there was a desire to bring it out on the floor. What is the procedure for bringing it out on the floor?
Three.
I thought it was three.
It's two, three.
Oh, just two.
It's two signatures, I have to remember, I think it's after six weeks.
Two signatures after six weeks, it would have been after four or five.
Mr. McLaughlin?
All that aside, I think Fred brought this to the floor tonight, and was in the process, it was, it's my belief, it was in the process of trying to get a resolution supporting his letter. Bill may have beaten into the punch, but I do believe that this is before us now. Fred, as far as allowing these two people to speak, Mr. Slingeby and Mr. Decker to speak, and those were the only ones that spoke, you recognized them, and that's why they spoke. And I, I for one have had a number of people at my home over the last, last few weeks, both, both from the conservationist side and from the forest products side on this issue, and they've spoken about the radicals, not radicals on the other side, but the radicals on their side. The people from the forest products talked about the fact that there is a small minority that's very vocal and very, and very forceful and very radical. Same for, for the other side, felt the same way. But they also felt that we needed to start somewhere, Montana needs to start somewhere, the community needs to start somewhere, in trying to address the issue of wilderness and jobs. And if we continue to argue, we'll continue to argue for another thirteen years. And they felt that this Kuttenai-Lolo Accords bill was, was in a way a stepping stone, be it small, as it only serves two national forests, but it is, it is somewhere that we can start. And they have agreed on this, and I think that it's extremely important that we start somewhere to try and get on with this, with this process. And I don't think that this letter does that, I think it does tend to muddy the water and leave it right where it was before, and I for one am in favor of this, of this resolution, and hope that it does do something to further, to solve this problem and try and get on with, with how we're going to handle the national forests in the state of Montana and the surrounding areas, and I will vote for this resolution.
Mrs. Schaefer?
The rules do say that any, whenever any item of business duly referred to a council committee has not been acted upon within six weeks of that referral, a petition signed by two council members shall be sufficient to bring that item directly to the floor under new business at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the council. But I don't think that rule particularly applies in this situation, because the Lolo-Kuttenai situation was on the agenda from the Economic Development Committee. And because we have expanded or changed, or have taken in another aspect of consideration, it's still the Kuttenai-Lolo Accords that we're talking about, it's still the same subject that the chairman of the committee brought onto the floor. So I think Bill's motion is in order.
I'm willing to go along with that, I would like to point out to the council, however, that Rule Nine, it seems to me, is fairly clear. Rule Nine says that all items of business to be considered at any regular meeting of the council shall be placed on the agenda by noon of the previous Friday. No items not on the agenda will be considered except under a suspension of these rules. That's obviously there for the protection of the public, so that there is notice of what it is that is going to be considered. I realize that this is an unusual situation, that the committee only met this afternoon, but under, under the rules, if a committee is going to meet on Monday afternoon, then it needs a suspension of the rules in order to have any of its items considered. Since we have not applied that to all the other items, I guess we won't apply it to this one, but I think the council does need to keep in mind what its own rules say. Mr. Rice?
I believe our rules also say that if we do it, it's okay. And I would also point out that, and I don't care what we do on this, I'm somewhat appalled at what's going on, but, but all of the items that, I mean, there were a number of items that we have talked about tonight that were not on the agenda, all of which should have had suspensions of the rules, and yet it was in fact the committee's intention, even though it is not reflected in the minutes, to act on those items tonight. I mean, I, I think that that is a fair representation. We were moving towards this, we indicated to people we were doing that and that, so, so the intention at least was to act on these tonight, recognizing that we had a deadline. I feel sort of like I've been bushwhacked here, but I also feel that the intention has always been to act on, on this item.
Well, it seems clear to me that the council's intention is to act on it this evening. I do want to point out to you what the rules are, and I think we need to keep them in mind for the future. We will consider that the, that Mr. Potts' motion is on the floor, that you have a resolution before you. Because you have a resolution before you, our, our rules require that we give an opportunity for members of the public to speak. Mrs. Schaefer?
I wanted to read from the minutes of May thirtieth of the Economic Development Committee, it says, "Resolution supporting the Kuttenai-Lolo Accords. After discussing complexity of several issues within the accords and the resulting Senate Bill Number Seventy-two, the committee concluded it will be more appropriate for the council to present a letter rather than a resolution supporting aspects of the accords and the process, which led to development of the accords. The letter will be presented to the council at its June third meeting." So we're just following what the committee's schedule is.
Is there any further discussion on the motion to adopt a resolution? Mr. Lucino?
Fred used the word "bushwhacked," and I, I can sympathize with that, Fred. I, I'm one of the people that served on this committee with Fred on this subject, and I, I'm a little dismayed and caught off guard that, that this letter isn't, isn't very well-received by those people who have been involved in this process the longest, and I'm speaking in reference to Jerry's remarks, and I don't know, I won't speak for John Gatchel with the Montana Wilderness Association, I don't know where John stands with this letter. But I guess I feel like I need to pass. If this resolution, if, if we decide to vote on the resolution that was presented by Mr. Slingeby, I'm going to have to pass because I, as I say, I've been caught off guard here, and I, I think we need to, I would personally prefer addressing this back in committee again before we bring it out.
Any further discussion? Are there any members of the public who would like to further address the council regarding this, Mr. Slingeby?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, Mr. Rice mentioned that the hearing that is going to be held June tenth is not actually a hearing, it is an official hearing, and it, it takes on a little bit, little bit different form. There will be an opportunity for people, for the public, to have input by, by inserting letters into the official record. It is an official hearing based on Senate Bill seventy-two. You know, referring to a couple of the other remarks that was made, I think it's somewhat unfair that, you know, that Mr. Rice is assuming that I knew what was going to be in the content of that letter. I can, I can assure you that I did not see the content of that letter until I arrived here tonight. I did have some discussion with Carl Anglin today. Carl did not give me any specifics as to what was in the letter. And I think that if we brought the, the original accords team together, and if we displayed this letter as the city council's endorsement of the process, that I can assure you that that letter would not satisfy the needs of the people that were involved in the Lolo Accords. And I think that in all fairness, that Mr. Lucino and Mr. Rice also have to admit that I had some strong objections to a lot of the arguments that were brought to the table during the committee hearings in respect of what was being said by the Alliance for the Wild Rockies and, and their position on this particular issue. So in my mind, I think that our position was almost completely left out of the letter that was written. I think, other than what was written at the top of the letter, that, that this letter is an endorsement of Senate Bill seventy-two, the rest of that letter basically is the position of the Alliance for the Wild Rockies. We feel that that is basically a no-compromise position. They do not take into consideration the issue of jobs in this part of the country, that is the position that I represent. I represent about six hundred mill workers out of Bonner, Montana, and I'll tell you what, they'd be highly dissatisfied with, with that particular letter. Thank you.
Further discussion? Any further comments from members of the public? Mrs. Schaefer?
I did have a call from a person who is on the Accords Committee, he could not be present tonight. He said that, he said that there were extremists on both sides, but this was a compromise. And he asked me to support this letter that we have, not the resolution. I feel that to introduce and to accept or support the resolution at this point is a negation of the process, the committee process, and the committee that agreed on this particular letter. I may not have all the facts, but if I don't, I'd like to have more time. I certainly couldn't vote yes on the resolution.
I need to remind the council that we do have a couple of other items to take up this evening, and we've got some citizens who have waited patiently nearly three hours, so let's try to move along as well as we might, this is obviously an important issue. Any further discussion, Mr. Lucino?
I just want to clarify something, I don't know if I did a very good job of explaining something, but real briefly, from the beginning of the committee meetings when we've, since we've been talking about this, I've had great sympathy for those people who've been involved in the, in the accords process the longest. And, and what I meant to say earlier is that I didn't realize that those people would be unhappy with this letter, and that's my fault, not their fault. And for that reason, for the reason that I'm caught off guard right now in that area, I'm going to have to pass if we, if we just wind up voting on the resolution.
Any further discussion on the resolution?
Do you have a division?
Yes. Please call the roll.
Potts?
Yes.
Reedy?
Yes.
Rice?
No.
Sampson?
Yep.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Shay?
No.
Wood? Craig?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hermes?
Yes.
Lucino?
Pass.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Do the passes wish to change their vote, starting with Wood?
No.
No change? Lucino?
No.
Eight As, two Noes, and two Pass.
Resolution is adopted. Does that conclude your agenda, Mr. Lucino? All right. Go on to the Finance and License Committee. Mr. Sampson.
First will be the meeting of June 3, which was immediately prior to this meeting, and the only thing that we took up is, as announced, was claims. Committee recommends the council approve claims totaling $54,599.80, and I would so move.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the motion carries.
Next is the meeting of May 23rd. First item is resolution to declare 23.77 acre parcel west of Mountain Shadows as surplus and authorizing its sale. Committee recommends the council adopt a resolution declaring certain city of Missoula property tract 3 of COS 2425 as surplus, authorizing the sale and disposal of said property, and I would so move.
Is there any discussion? Is there any citizen comment? Please call the roll.
Reedy?
Yes.
Rice?
Pass.
Sampson?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hermes?
Yes.
Lucino?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Potts?
Yes.
Does the pass wish to change his vote?
Nope.
No change? Okay, 11-1.
Next being claims. Pursuant to the authority granted at the May 27, 1991 council meeting, the committee approved claims totaling $238,396.91. Recommend the council ratify this approval at their June 3, 1991 meeting, and I would so move.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
End of reports.
All right. Go on to the Judicial Review Committee. Mr. Reedy.
It's the motion to adopt resolution urging the University of Montana to commence its fall semester academic calendar after liber day to facilitate student summer employment. And I so move.
Discussion. Is there any citizen comment? Call the roll, please.
Rice? Sampson?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Wood? Craig?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hermes?
Yes.
Lucino?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Potts?
Yes.
Reedy?
Yes.
11-0.
The resolution is adopted. Is that it, Mr. Reedy?
End of report.
Fire,绿化, and zoning committee, Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
Although a quorum was not present, the committee recommends the council approve amended summary plan for tract 1 of Bitterroot Homes Edition Number 2, subject to the following conditions. Number one, sanitary restrictions should be lifted by state and local health authorities. Number two, sidewalk plans should be approved by the city engineer installed in accordance with submitted and approved plans. Sidewalk on Patty Creek Drive shall be four foot wide, should, shall be a four-foot wide boulevard sidewalk. The sidewalk on Spartan Drive should be a five-foot wide sidewalk located adjacent to the curb. Number three, the developer should provide easements for utilities in appropriate areas. Number four, approach permit shall be applied for and granted by the city engineer's office. Number five, all driveways shall be paved. Number six, a one-foot no-access strip should be placed on the face of the plat on Lot 4 adjacent to the Patty Creek Drive, and I so move.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Next one. Although a quorum was not present for the committee, was not present, the committee recommends the council approve the summary plan for Hillside Homes Number 1, lots 9A, 9B, Block 2, subject to the following conditions. Number one, sanitary restrictions should be lifted by state and local health authorities. Number two, the developer should provide easements for utilities in appropriate areas. Number three, approach permit should be applied for and granted by the city engineer's office. Number four, all driveways shall be paved, and I so move.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
It's the end of the agenda.
Public Safety Committee, we've covered everything.
Yes.
Joint Sunlight Lands Conservation Committee. Mrs. Schaefer.
Yeah, I think there's just the one item, Number One, Trail Development Planning, a memorandum of understanding. The committee recommends the council adopt the memorandum of understanding among cosponsors of the Missoula Trails' non-motorized transportation plan.
Is there any discussion? We do, as I mentioned earlier, have members of the public here who would be glad to answer questions about this. It seems a shame not to have any more than after they've been here so long. Mrs. Schaefer.
By adopting this memorandum of understanding, are we then approving, leaving the infamous fence up, and we're approving of Lyle Grimms continuing to run, and Helen Chippolato?
No, none of those items are related to this, except very indirectly in that if some of those proposals that have been made were to be adopted by the council, that would create a trail development fund from which we might eventually draw the money that's referred to under this memorandum of understanding.
So basically, all we're adopting then, in these minutes that we have, are those, that motion in bold, in capital letters? We're not adopting all the other ABCDs and Fs and Gs and so on?
That's correct.
Mrs. Schaefer, there is, there is a copy of the, there is a copy later on in the packet that, that describes the memorandum of understanding. It's, it's really not, it doesn't have the details that some of those landowners would be proposing, and this is, this is a separate item.
I would just like to say, from having worked with the planning group, that I think that it's been an excellent example of intergovernmental and interagency cooperation. I'd like to thank the Forest Service, Jerry Cavalt, and Kate Hansen, and the university, Ken Stoltz, and the county commissioners for their involvement in this. The same memorandum of understanding as before, all of the agencies. If there's nothing further, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is a roll call. I'll take a roll call.
Sampson?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hermes?
Yes.
Lucino?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Potts?
Yes.
Reedy?
Yes.
Rice? Okay, 11-0.
The memorandum of understanding is adopted. We'll go on to comments of city council members. Mr. Harrison.
Yes, I'm sensing a growing concern in the community over the amount of money that proposed, and current projects may end up costing the taxpayer. Everyone's for baseball, ice rinks, foot bridges, public access TV, trail systems, open spaces, sewer in the urban area, sidewalks, indigent healthcare, and economic development, finishing the riverfront park, and numerous other projects. People want all these things, but they have some major concerns. Basically, how's all this gonna get paid for, and who's gonna do the pain? I guess I just want to, again, remind the council that most of the people in Missoula simply cannot afford every project that comes along. It's very important that we discuss and prioritize what is in the public interest, and ask for only those things that we can reasonably afford. And then I'd also like to thank Jim Oberhaugh for, for an excellent presentation today at the Missoula Lions Club. Thank you again, Jim.
Just a note for council members. In your packet, under Cable Television Committee, there was a letter put out by some folks in the Rattlesnake on the city's stance, and also Cable Montana's stance with carrying MCAT on its system. There's some real inaccuracies throughout the letter. In the second paragraph, it states that Cable Montana enjoys exclusive rights to the Rattlesnake. You know, that is not true. Cable Montana is the only cable provider, but it's not exclusive. Any cable provider could certainly go up there. It says that Cable Montana refuses to negotiate a franchise agreement with the city in exchange for this monopoly. I feel that, you know, this letter's gonna do a lot to, to hurt our interaction with Cable Montana. I hope it doesn't, but certainly that is totally false. They have negotiated with us, and I feel that we're continuing to negotiate with them. Almost every paragraph has inaccuracies, to say the least. Another one is that Les Hilliard plans to censor the programs. I have not heard him say that. He has said that he would perhaps review his right of coverage if there are problems. It says in the last paragraph that Cable Montana chooses to disseminate information and refuses to negotiate with Missoula. That is not true. Says that unlike their dealings with TCI, our city council is taking a very weak stance regarding negotiations with Cable Montana. I don't feel this is true. I think we've taken a reasonable and prudent stance on negotiations. I think we're continuing to negotiate. So I feel that this is a real sad commentary on whoever's putting this information out because certainly they're doing what they're accusing Cable Montana of.
Mr. McLaughlin.
I have two comments tonight. The first one is, has to do with the $5,000 that we gave MEDC tonight instead of the $8,000 they asked for. Seven-to-five vote that we had on that tonight shows just how crucial this council thinks its budget is. Donna wanted to take that $3,000 and put it into the Forest Service Museum, and that $3,000 didn't go there either. A lousy $3,000, and we wouldn't even budget that. We found that, that the budget is being, is getting tighter and tighter, and I have to agree with what Doug has just said, that we want to do a lot of things for this community, and a lot of people in this community want a lot of things done. But it comes down to who's gonna pay and when are they going to pay? And the ballpark is one, is one big issue that's coming up. I'm a big baseball fan myself. I came to this meeting coaching a ballgame that I left in the middle of to get here. But I think it's real important that we're upfront with the taxpayers, and we let them know exactly what is down the road, and we let them know that this community does have needs, and to go along with its wants, and those needs are going to have to be paid for too. And before we go to the ballot with the ballpark, I think we ought to be very upfront with taxpayers, let them know that there's fire stations down the road that are going to need funding, that they're going to have to pay for. Let them know what it's going to cost them the next 10 or 15 years, and allow them to make a legitimate and knowledgeable vote for this ballpark. And on the same issue, I think it is also important that we get some type of report back from the EPA on the ground, that we're talking about building this ballpark on. I would hate to go to the, go to the voters with a $3.5 million bond issue, ask them to support it, and then find out that we're going to have to remove all the soil from that, from that site because it's contaminated, and that since we bought the property, we may be liable for the payment of that. That could make this the most expensive minor league ballpark in the world. So I would think before we get to that point, we should find out for sure that this, that this ground is safe, and that there is no problems with it, and then go ahead. But I would stress that we'd be upfront with the taxpayers on what's facing them down the road.
At the risk of sounding like a repluging to my right, I agree with both Doug and Larry. There should be three lists in Missoula, probably, a want list, a need list, and a wish list. I would stick with the need list. I, I went to the MRA hearing on the ice rink and the ballpark, and I would really like to see that here. But I, I, at this point, I can't finance this type, I mean, support this type of financing just for, as I said, the quality of life to be improved in Missoula. I think the quality of life is very important, but if we put taxes on people, on set incomes, both young and old, their quality of life is gonna be ruined. They're gonna have to convince me to even put it on the ballot, to tell you the truth.
Many of the concerns expressed by Larry regarding the ground are being looked into by MRA. They will be researched and looked at before we proceed.
All right. No comment.
Well, I don't think I'm gonna talk about baseball tonight, but I wanna talk about a couple of things that are free and fun to do in the summertime. Mr. Gene Deemer talked about farmers market being almost 20 years old, and that's just a wonderful thing to do on Saturday morning, and people are happy, and I even saw our council president down there in shorts on Saturday morning, so there's lots to do. John Pierce is inviting, secondly, is inviting people to help plant different grasses at John Tool Park every Saturday morning at 10 o'clock. And Chuck Jankel talked about that this morning. There are many volunteers involved in that, another good project that helps the community. They're planting blue bunch wheatgrass. That's one of the things that is native to this region and very hardy, and has, and, apparently is, I haven't been there, but I'd like to see how it looks. Walking through Greeno Park, I've discovered a couple of things. I don't know if everyone has seen the nature conservancy signs. They're just wonderful. They identify many of the species, the plants, the trees, the bushes, and now, there's no excuse if you don't know snowberries from service berries or mountain ashberries because there's signs on everything. And for people who are really naive about ecology, there's even a sign for lilac and apple tree. So it's lots of fun. I talked about the new restrooms in Greeno Park last week, but what I found out is that they're locked, and I don't know why the restrooms are locked. So what good is a handicapped, accessible, beautiful bathrooms with fences in front of them when, when they have big bolts on them? So I'm not sure why. I went through tonight, and they were locked again. You know, Bob, Hermes, you talked about something tonight, and I think it's real important. I went to the last cable TV committee meeting, and I'm just beginning to learn, there's so much, it's very complex. But I know one thing, there's at least two sides to every story, at least. And something that you said tonight, that these comments in that letter that may not be true, I know that several of the people who authored that letter, and Sue and John Talbert are, are, their names are signed, they're very reasonable people. They have worked within the community on very important issues for years. These are reasonable people. I think what it points up is the need to communicate more with, with neighbors of the Rattlesnake. If there, if there are some areas where they either don't have the correct facts, or the other side doesn't have the correct facts, we know one thing, that there's a lot of feeling about this issue, and, and that needs to be explored, and probably sooner rather than later.
Mrs. Schaefer.
I want to thank publicly Louise, Louise Rolston. Louise lives just on the other side of the underpass. That used to be full of weeds, it was full of rocks, just was not attractive. She by herself has made a rock garden, has planted irises and other flowers there. It now rivals the one across the street, which is maintained by the Orange, Orange Street Inn. It certainly proves to all of us who drive by there and see the beautiful rock garden, what a difference just one person can make, and we do appreciate that. My other comment is on yet another attack that we heard tonight. I think that it is very unbecoming to Mr. Preston, and I think that these attacks on our personal lives, our trials and tribulations that go on in our homes is, really should be out of bounds. Fred has performed his job as alderman, very Fred has performed his job as alderman very professionally despite what must be a very trying time for him and his family. And I, I, I just detest these attacks as, right now it's Fred, but none of us live in, in, none of us are perfect, so who's going to be next? I just don't think it's fair and I wish that whatever questions Mr. Preston wants answered, I wish he would go to the, not publicly as he has been doing, but would come to any of us privately and ask those questions. And I'm sure that he would get answers.
Mr. Wood?
All of us at one point or another have probably been in a position where we've had something very dear to our heart and we wanted to express that to those who, who were the ones capable of influencing what was so dear to our heart. And when a deaf ear is turned to us, it's a very frustrating thing. And I'd like to thank the council tonight for supporting this resolution on behalf of the students at the university. At the risk of sounding like our mayor, I think this is a wonderful example of citizenry and community that in a college town, we can band together like this. And I really want to thank the judicial review committee and, and the council at large for supporting these students and their desire to make money in the summer to pay for the tuition that the Board of Regents has levied and, and at a time that works well with their, with how jobs are structured in our economy. So thank you very much on behalf of them. And just a quick word on behalf of Fred. Fred worked very hard specifically on this accord deal that we voted on just a little bit ago and I'm sorry it didn't turn out in the way that he had hoped it might. He worked very hard and it was, well, I think I'll just leave it there and I'd like to thank Fred for all his hard work on this and I'm just sorry it didn't work out the way he wanted it. And along the lines of what Donna said, I also would echo what she had to say concerning some comments that were very out of line earlier. But you know, I guess when I look at the American flag, I tend to think that it's a flag that stands for tolerance and I'm glad that people can come and talk at the podium and they can express their viewpoint as outrageous as it might be, as uncouth as it might be, as distasteful as it might be. I guess that's America and, and sometimes we hear things that are extremely out of line and unpleasant, but when I look at the flag, I'll be thinking of Mr. Preston's remarks and his right to say them as outrageous as they were tonight.
This is Craig.
I just want to remind the council that at PAZ tomorrow, we'll be talking about the Linda Vista Sewer Project and it's important that we all get there together so we can hear it all at one time.
Dan?
I forgot to mention that one of my friends in constituents called about the TCI cable company and their encore, or encore movie channel and he said to make sure and announce that if you don't want this, to call up and tell them what you're going to get charged for.
Okay. We'll go on to comments of staff. Do we have any staff comment this evening? Any items of new business to come before the council? Items to be referred. Request by Chuck Sterns regarding revised expiration dates for planning board members appointed by the city to appointments. Request by Doug Harrison regarding criteria for fee reduction to nonprofits to conservation. Requests by Dennis Taylor regarding Lyle Grimes lease proposal to the joint conservation sunlight lands regarding Dennis Washington inland properties privacy easement proposal to the same committee regarding Helen Chippilato lease proposal to the same joint committee. Requests by Sharon Duckett regarding H U D Section 312 ground opportunity and funding requirements to economic development and regarding possible Rawlings Construction Company CDBG application to economic development. Request by Dennis Taylor regarding creation of a trails development fund to finance and license. Requests by Chuck Sterns regarding claims to finance and regarding contract award for hydraulic extrication and rescue tool for fire department to finance. Request by Joy Earls regarding personnel office copy or maintenance service contract to finance. Request by Chuck Gibson regarding fire department copy machine service maintenance agreement with A plus laser and office supply to finance. Request by Mike Press regarding fee revisions to PAZ. Request by Letty Swallow regarding request for a fee waiver by Russell Elementary School PTA to PAZ. And petition number 6967, a request by Angelo and Veda Legoso to annex parts of lots one and two, three A.C. flat H Southside Homes, 2523 39th Street, PAZ. Petition number 6968, a request by Valley Christian School to annex lots 23 and 24, U.S. Government Number Two, at 2526 Sunset Lane to PAZ. Requests by Bruce Bender regarding change orders number two and three for SID 495 East Cold Springs Sewer Project Public Works regarding amendment number one for engineering services for Reserve Street Interceptor to Public Works regarding contract amendment number two with JMM Consulting Engineers for Secondary Clarifier Project, I take it to Public Works. Request by Carla Kraus regarding CD Contractors retainage account approval to Public Work. Requests by Chuck Sterns regarding contract award for SID number 492 alley paving block three, Mount Sentinel Edition Number Four, the 600 block between East Sussex and South Mountain Lees to Public Works regarding contract award for SID number 493 alley paving block 12, South Missoula Edition, the 300 block between Woodford and Brooks to Public Works. And regarding contract award for construction of secondary clarifier modifications to Public Works. Are there any other referrals?
Question about the referral to conservation, fee reduction for nonprofits. Why is that going to conservation?
I thought conservation usually handles parks things. I thought before we refer to the budget committee as a whole or, or finance that we'd talk about it a little bit with like Jim Van Pausen or something, see.
But, oh, you're thinking of the fees for, for par, for reserving parks and those, oh, I, I was thinking of building fees and...
Oh, okay. Any other referrals?
We did have something on the PAZ agenda and I'd like to put it back on there. There are unplatted lands at the base of Mount Jumbo that have not been brought into the city and I'd just like to know more about that. PAZ.
Okay. Unplatted lands at base of Mount Jumbo, PAZ.
I think they're platted to some extent. Doesn't the line go diagonally along the section line and cut through people's house in New York?
In some cases, yes. They could, I don't know if they're all platted, Jim. I know they're in the county.
The lands at the base of Mount Jumbo.
Yes, okay.
Leave out the word unplatted. Any other referrals? Announcements of committee meetings?
Finance?
Three o'clock on Thursday.
Anything for JR?
No meeting.
Public safety? Public works?
Tuesday at three.
Appointments?
On Tuesday at 2:45.
Budget committee of the whole?
No meeting.
Cable TV?
We'll meet next week.
Okay. Conservation? Joint Conservation Sunlight Lands?
We will hold that meeting next Thursday, June 13th at 4:30.
Economic development?
Thursday at 4:15.
Pardon me?
Thursday at 4:15.
Sign ordinance?
No meeting.
Sunlight lands?
Just plain sunlight.
That would be set for next week with, with conservation.
PAZ?
How come you guys can all get all your committees on one sheet and I have to have my own?
You saw how Fred got it.
Donna, how, how long are you going, are we going to need for public safety?
Jim, how long do you think that'll take?
I have a 10-minute thing, I think.
Yeah.
4:15 tomorrow, Tuesday.
Finance and license Thursday at three, no judicial review. Public safety Tuesday at four, public works Tuesday at three. Appointments Tuesday at 2:45, no budget committee, no cable TV, no conservation, no joint conservation sunlight lands. Economic development Thursday at 4:15, no sign ordinance, no sunlight lands. PAZ Tuesday at 4:15.
If there's nothing further, the meeting is adjourned.